Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council. Today is Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. And to start us off during our moment of silence, I'd just like to ask everyone during our moment of silence to honor those that have been impacted in the surrounding areas of southwest Virginia, northeast Tennessee, and western North Carolina, and ask that you keep them in our thoughts and prayers during this difficult time. So at this time, we'll do our moment of silent prayer. Thank you. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Well, good evening, everyone. It's great to see you here tonight. Thank you for coming out and joining us. And also, thank you to everyone that came out last night for the Bristol Chamber of Commerce's candidate forum. It was great to see several of you that are back with us tonight in that audience. I'd just like to take a moment and express some gratitude, one, to our Bristol community who has stepped up in this past week. We have, I've been amazed, and I've been in awe of all the people that have come out, wanted to help, reached out to me at the city and said, "How can we help our surrounding communities?" And so, in that, I'd like to express gratitude to our governor, Yonkin, who has been here multiple days, also to Delegate O'Quinn, who has been, ran into him all over the place. I feel like he is cloned. I see him so many places, I don't know how he does it. And then also Senator Pillion for their support and assistance during this time. I'd also like to thank the Bristol, Virginia Fire Department members from the Virginia Task Force, Bristol, Virginia Task Force, for the Bristol Hazardous Materials Response Team, and our dedicated police officers who also volunteered their time to help out our neighbors in need. We certainly appreciate it. Additionally, I'd like to thank, again, the Bristol community for the overwhelming response we have had from our residents, to our churches, and our schools step up and help out, and especially to Hollins Fellowship and Euclid Avenue Baptist Church, who opened their doors to provide shelters for those who lost their homes. Additionally, thank you to the parents and the teachers and the students at Virginia High School, who led the charge for our city and the surrounding area to collect a truckload of donations that then was sent to Damascus. So your kindness and generosity is certainly noted, and it shows what a spirit we have here in Bristol. So thank you all for your support and compassion. I'll now open it and see if there are any other council member comments.
I'll jump in. I'd like to echo the mayor's comments. My wife and I are proud Bristolians, plan to live out our days here, but I didn't start here. Started in Damascus. Spent first 21 years of my life in that small little town, and it's been heartbreaking to see what's happened through the storm. Thankfully, miraculously, there was no loss of life, just loss of property, loss of things. But that little town is resilient. It's great to see them come together as a community. As the mayor said, we've had so many folks here in the city, here in the region, really jump in, support Damascus, support, excuse me, northeast Tennessee, western North Carolina, just the entire region that's been impacted. She did a great job of going through the list. I won't repeat everything, but I did want to highlight a couple others, too. Our very own Ms. Montgomery, she is our Public Information Officer, but she's also been kind of a regional Public Information Officer with posting resources, sharing in different community groups about FEMA resources, different agencies that can help during the flooding. So thank you for doing that. That's been, I know a lot of people have responded. A lot of people have been helped by that. Thank you. And then, in addition to our fire department, we, as Mayor Nave said, we have the hazmat team that went over and served in Damascus. Also, the swiftwater rescue team made some pretty remarkable recoveries during the flood. There was a home that was swept off the foundation, fell in a car. Folks were climbing out of the window with tied-together bed sheets. Our guys were there in a boat getting them. So it's just remarkable what has happened. And also, as she said, our police department was there. I was over there earlier this week, ran into Officer Shadley. He was manning the guard post to downtown area, so it was good to see him there. And then also, my day job, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, we had a lot of Bristolians that work as lama and as crewmen for the power company that have worked hard to get the power back on for our region, long days, many of them working from early morning to early morning, to the wee hours. So it's just a lot of folks in our community, a lot of folks in the region that have come together to support Damascus and the other communities, too, impacted. So it's, it's been been hard to watch, but it's also, I've been in Damascus a lot lately, and it's just, everybody is hopeful, even with the destruction, even with not knowing if the creeper trail is going to be open next year or whenever, not knowing if a business is going to reopen, there's hope there. So it's just, it's a good testament to the human spirit, so.
Well, just to reiterate everything that the mayor and the vice mayor said is true with all of our, you know, elected officials, like the governor and State Senator Pillion doing a lot, and everyone here. Jake, you mentioned the fire department. I was down here at fire station number one on Monday night, last Monday night, and there were the regular firefighters that were working on their regular shift. And then there was also the hazmat guys that were coming back. They spent all day working on some stuff. So we really have a great crew down there. And just a thanks for, you know, when the storm came through last Friday, everyone with our public works department and that was out clearing the roads, cutting up some trees, working to get the power back on and keep our roads open here in the city. It was a big effort. So appreciate everyone who worked hard and worked a lot of overtime to get stuff done.
Our emergency responders often work 12- and 24-hour shifts on a regular basis. And then stuff like last week happens. And then they do double that. They just do so many things that we don't even think of, that we don't see. Our fire department, as y'all pointed out, has training, and some of the little training in this area, they have themselves for swiftwater rescue. I understand they do things like high-angle rescue. They have the hazmat response services. And we are blessed to have them doing that based right here, where they are able to help others in our community with services that otherwise wouldn't be here. Then they go above and beyond when things like last week happens, with the disasters that come up. And they go from their 12- or 24-hour shifts, and then they just go all weekend, saving people, rescuing people, cleaning things up, providing meals, whatever they have to do. And we just need to really express our gratitude to them.
All right. Thank you. And I will note, Councilmember Neil Osborn is joining us by phone. Yes? No, he is not? Okay, he is not joining us by phone. All right. City manager comments?
No comments tonight. You all said everything eloquently, and no reason for me to go over that again. But thank you to all the first responders that have helped out over the past week and a half.
All right. Thank you. Next, looking for a motion to adopt our agenda?
I move the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second?
All right. We have a motion by the vice mayor and a second. To Neil, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes. All right. Moving into the first item on the agenda, joint public hearing to consider zoning map amendment ZMA 02-2024 for 1749 Bonham Road. And I will now open the public hearing and ask, okay, I was going to say Daniel Shu, but that's not...
I will open the public hearing for the planning commission.
All right. Thank you. All right. And we have one person signed up for public comment, and that is Katie Moore. And I will ask you to come forward, and you have three minutes to share your comments. And you will get a warning light, that's a yellow light, and then a red light at the end.
Good evening, council staff. We own the land that is on the corner of contiguous this, that is Tenacre Track, and we was unaware that the rezoning could be done, or we would have already requested it. So we would ask tonight that we be considered, if this is granted, that we get a chance to also achieve the same. That's all we got. Because we was unaware that it was able to be done. So for those who do not know me, I am a developer here, long-term. We've developed a lot of properties in the area, and also southwest Virginia, northeast Tennessee, and abroad, so to speak, of many other states. So we have a good prospect on development of this property, and Randy Eads knows about this. And so, this would help us give a little bit more flexibility.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Now we'll move into the staff report by J.D. Trigg.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. So we have received a request, file number ZMA 02-2024, to rezone property located at 1749 Bonham Road, which is tax map parcel 267-6-1. Mr. Jim Street of Coronet Drive LLC has submitted an application for the zoning map amendment. The property is currently zoned M2C, which is general industrial district with conditions, and the request is to amend the zoning of the lot to FRD, which is the flexible redevelopment district. You can see the zoning of the property and of the surrounding area. You have this property, and then Mr. Moore's property, which are zoned M2C. There is residential neighborhoods, kind of all around it almost, and then you have the industrial park that's zoned M2 there. We also have the southwest Virginia Police Academy that's there. It's zone B1, as well as a church, a couple of churches in that vicinity. Property pictures, I think most of us are aware of what it looks like, but this is just the picture taken from across the street on Bonham Road. And then, this is a survey of the property that was performed for when it was originally constructed as Boise Cascade back in the mid-'90s, I believe is what it was. So I'm just going to kind of go back to this area right here, and then I'll go through the staff report real quick. So the application, as mentioned, is to amend the city Bristol zoning map to change map parcel 267-6-1, 1749 Bonham Road, from M2C, general industrial district conditional, to FRD, flexible redevelopment district. The owner is Coronet Drive LLC, and the applicant is Jim Street. The request was advertised in the Bristol Herald Courier on September 28th and October 1st, 2024, in accordance with Virginia State Code. A sign was placed on the property on October 1st, notifying of the public hearing, and adjoining property owner notices were sent out on October 2nd, 2024. There have been no previous similar zoning map amendment requests for this property to the knowledge of city staff. The planning commission at the October 16th, 2023 meeting did determine that a data or call center was similar to the current zoning restrictions. The existing land use is a vacant call center, which I do believe is being leased right now to Amazon for some additional parking, but that is all that is going on at the site. As I mentioned, M2C is the zoning district. Future land use map designations light industrial. The size of the site, 16.10 acres, and the historic land use is a call center. I'm just going to skip over to the staff analysis here on page six. So there are a mix of residential, public, semi-public, office, and manufacturing uses in this area. So there's a little bit of everything over here. The closest residential properties are across the street from the site, in access from Bonham Road, or directly behind the site, and are accessed through the Lynnwood Hills neighborhood. So the characteristics and description of the FRD, flexible redevelopment district, I'm just going to read through the definition in the code. "The purpose of this district is to encourage the creative redevelopment of certain previously developed properties by allowing a mix of compatible land uses in conformity with the city comprehensive plan and with an approved site plan. This may entail the reuse of existing structures, or the redevelopment of former commercial or industrial sites for new construction, or a combination of both activities. The intent is to rejuvenate economic activity to relatively large tracts of land that have been vacant, thereby providing jobs and increased tax base." And as you can see in your staff report, there is a list of everything that is permitted in the FRD district by right and by special use permit. Just a sampling, it is for things such as financial institutions, data call centers, indoor sports and recreation facility, restaurants, office uses, maybe some light manufacturing, as long as it's inside, just type of assembly of products. So it has a lot of different potential uses for that property. You could also do residential on that property as well. So as I mentioned, the property is currently M2 with conditions. I just kind of wanted to go through those conditions just for a second. So when this property was rezoned, it was done to lessen the impact of the manufacturing zone on neighboring Lynnwood Hills here. So there'd be kind of a buffer between the industrial park and the residential area. So they restricted the uses of what you could put on that property. Those specific uses that are permitted right now are establishments for the manufacturer, processing, assembly, and distribution of products, and the office buildings or corporate headquarters related thereto, establishments for scientific research and development, establishments primarily for the wholesale distribution of goods, products, and materials, heliports, and public utility facilities for the use of occupants of the industrial park, industrial facilities, and public uses necessary to service the property. The restrictions also prohibit heavy industry that might involve odor, dust, noise, and other environmental impacts. However, the permitted uses still contain the term "industrial facilities" and would allow manufacturing and distribution facilities that could generate substantial truck traffic on the surrounding roadway. It also, want to note that there are some restrictive covenants on the property that mirror the conditional zoning exactly. They did that on purpose so that there wouldn't be any conflict between the zoning and the restrictive covenants. The property owner is working through having those covenants altered at the moment, right now. So we anticipate that to be going through the process, just as this zoning request is. So we sent this out to staff for evaluations, and I'll give you some of the comments that we received. So for local traffic, Uma Pokuri, our traffic engineer, commented that the new development is projected to generate an average of 438 trips on weekdays, totaling up to 7,000 AAWT, which is weekly, daily traffic. The crash data indicates that the majority of the incidents were rear-end collisions and single crashes resulting in property damage only. Based on my analysis, the crash data suggests that rear-end collisions constitute the majority of the incidents. This trend may be due to sudden braking at traffic signals, possibly caused by insufficient clearance intervals, aggressive driving, or driver distraction. I believe the majority of the additional trips will be from the interstate and are unlikely to affect the section of Old Airport Road between King Mill Pike and Bonham Road. So the new development appears to have had no significant impact. If these trips do impact this section of Old Airport Road, maybe we will need to consider the situation further. It's important to adjust the signal timings to accommodate the changes in traffic patterns. There should be no adverse impact on natural resources. If the rezoning is allowed, city staff will require all environmental-related permitting to be obtained and approved prior to development, including soil and erosion, and stormwater management, if necessary. School system, there could be an impact on the traffic around the primary intermediate school, and I'll just shoot you back to the traffic comment there. Should be no impact on parks. So for emergency services, Eric Blevins, our fire marshal, commented that the hydrant location is acceptable, so this change should not create any additional issues or concerns, and the change would be acceptable. No comments were received from BVU. The public transit, the current east Bristol route does serve this area of the city, so there is a transit route along this. For government services, Jake Chandler, our public works director, commented that the site will be evaluated if there is a site plan submitted that modifies the existing conditions, specifically stormwater management and provision of solid waste services would be evaluated. And Matt Chapman, our economic development manager, commented, "I believe the proposed rezoning is beneficial for the property. It will allow more flexibility for the use of the facility while still including light manufacturing as a permitted use, and more intense manufacturing with a special use permit." The restrictive covenants are also in the process of being amended to allow pickleball in part of the facility, which would also fall under the permitted uses for the zoning. And a staff recommendation will be presented to the planning commission at the October 21st meeting.
All right. Thank you. I will now close our part of the public hearing and ask Ms. McElhaney if she'll come up and close.
I close the public hearing for the planning commission.
All right. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, the supplemental appropriation for $1,392,903. And we're looking for a staff report from Ms. Bradlin.
Thank you, Mayor Nave, and members of council. This agenda item is a supplemental appropriation of $1,392,903 to appropriate beginning balance funds for city attorney professional services in the amount of $500,000, to appropriate judicial alternative sentencing program specialty docket grant award proceeds in the amount of $15,840, to appropriate fire department grants, carryover grant funds for the fire department, aid to localities, aid to locality in the amount of $41,343, to appropriate carryover grant funds for four-for-life in the amount of $6,100, to appropriate additional grant monies received for fire programs current year, aid to localities, $15,718, and to appropriate unexpended prior-year proceeds for hazardous materials emergencies in the emergency, excuse me, in the amount of $10,902, to appropriate city sheriff grants, monies received for Project Lifesaver in the amount of $3,000, and to appropriate VDOT reimbursed maintenance, carryover funds received in fiscal year 2024 to be expended in the current fiscal year in the amount of $800,000. And staff does recommend that council approve the budget amendment as listed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Looking for a motion to approve?
Move to approve as presented.
Second?
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any council discussion? All right. Hearing none. To Neil, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes. Next item, presentation of June 30th, 2024, financial information. Ms. Bradlin.
Thank you. Mayor Nave, and members of council, this is the finance update for the year ended June 30th, 2024.
I do have another one, but they were not signed up for an agenda item. So I've got them down for after, after... The ordinance first reading, yes. Ms. Bradlin.
Once again, Mayor Nave, and members of council, this is the finance update for the year ended June 30th, 2024. This is unaudited data, and it's prepared on a cash basis. Our general fund summary with a budget of $72.9 million, revenues of $76.579,105% of budget, expenditures of $65.651 million, 90% of budget, for a balance at June 30th of $10,927,619. That's a very large number, so I wanted to provide a little bit more detail of that surplus. Beginning balance used from previous years was $2,699,429. Carryover for FY 2025, that does not include the monies that council just appropriated, $446,380. VDOT carryover funds in total of $2,137,139. So you can see pretty quickly that $10 million becomes $5,644,671. And of that, just some additional explanation, we had a one-time receipt in fiscal year 2024 of $2.1 million. We had insurance proceeds from Oak Street Building of $525,000. We had two significant revenue budget variances, one for general property taxes, $1.6 million, and interest earnings, $819,000. And that's just a little bit more detail of what makes up that $5.6. This is what our general fund revenue looks like. Our local revenue is at 72%. It's shown in the blue. We budgeted that to be 70% of budget. The state revenue is at 22%. That is shown in red, and it is 24% of the budget. The federal revenue is shown in green at 5%, and it was 5% of the budget. And then other financing sources, that small piece there is shown in yellow, and it consists of transfers from the local capital projects fund, and it is 1% of our revenue for the fiscal year. So our financial data graphs, and this is a comparison of actual receipts. Fiscal year 2020 is shown in gray, yellow, 2021 is shown in yellow, '22 is shown in red, and '23 is in green, and then last fiscal year, 2024, is shown in blue. You can see the local sales and use tax up across all periods. Cigarette taxes, up from '22 and '23, but actually down from FY '20 and '21. '22 and '23, but actually down from FY '20 and '21. Lodging taxes are up for all years presented as our restaurant meal taxes. Our local sales and use tax with a budget of $5.65 million for FY 2024. The blue line is the prior three-year average, and FY '24 is shown in orange. Sales tax collections run two months behind, meaning that June receipts are for the month of April. This is what that revenue looks like as it comes in for the city. Our lodging taxes with an annual budget of $2.9 million, and collections for lodging tax run one month behind. You can see here, October got a very large boost compared to prior months due to certain events that happened in the city in the month of September. Our restaurant meals tax with a budget of $9.743 million, and it is our largest budgeted other local tax, and it runs one month behind as well. This is what our general fund expenditures look like. This is how the city's money is spent. 26% is spent on public safety, health, welfare, and social services is at 15%, education is at 12%, government administration 9.77%, public works is at 9.68%. Our debt is 8% of total general fund expenditures, transfers is also at 8%. Parks, Recreation, and Cultural is at just over 4%. Judicial administration is 3.26%. Community development is at 1.54%, and non-departmental is at less than 1%. Our general fund expenditure update, once again, the departments in the city did an amazing job staying under budget. Government administration, 92% compared budget to actual. Judicial administration, 93%. Public safety, 94%. Public works was at 70% due to the timing of certain public works projects, and also due to that VDOT carryover that we've talked about or I mentioned earlier. Health, welfare, and social services was at 94%. Education, 100%. Parks, Recreation, and Cultural was at 90%. Community development, 68%, and that was due to the timing of certain flow-through payments and the timing of the comprehensive plan payments in FY '24. We'll pay a piece of that in FY '25. Non-departmental is at 88% due primarily to contingency monies unexpended and the timing of the Washington County revenue sharing payments. Debt was at 100%, and the transfers are at 82%. And once again, total expenditures for the year were at 90% of budget. Falls phases two and three update, so you can see that the budgeted revenues total $937,000, and that's made up of real property, personal property, local sales and use tax, restaurant meal taxes, business license tax, and the state sales tax. The actual collected for the year was $1,429,785,152% of budget, so that's good news for the city. The debt allocated to the falls is just over $4 million for FY '24. The revenue sharing piece, the last piece of the payment to Washington County, $46,415. So we actually budgeted for a deficit of just under $3.2 million, and the actual deficit Transitioning to the solid waste fund, and just a reminder, for FY '24, solid waste activities will be reported in the general fund for going forward. So the solid waste disposal fund summary with a budget of $43.5 million, revenues of $36.6 million, 84% of budget, and of those revenues, over $30 million were the bond proceeds that we received from the bond issuance in the fall of the fiscal year. Expenditures of $29.487 million, 68% of budget, and of that, $19 million was specific 588 and 498 projects, leaving a balance of $7.136 million budgeted for the year. Want to show here that the net bond proceeds, which was what we received for the bonds less the bond issuance costs, of $30,484,060. If that was backed out, that fund would have shown a deficit for the year of over $23 million, so that is significant. Moving on to our other fund summary, local capital projects with a budget of $1.6 million, revenues of $1.156 million, expenditures of $1.462 million, for a deficit balance there of $306,259, and that's because the federal monies for the police cars, we didn't actually receive that money until August of this year, but we have received it, so that's just a timing difference there. State, federal, and capital projects fund with a budget of $14.9 million, revenues of $772,000, expenditures of $193,000, for a balance there of $579,000, and that positive balance there is made up of prior-year VDOT receivables that were received early in the fiscal year. The state and federal capital projects fund should just about break even every year except for the timing of the reimbursement. The transit fund with revenues of $969,000, expenditures of $577,000, for a balance there of $391,612. That budget variance there in the transit fund is due to some equipment that was budgeted to be ordered in FY '24, but just because of the timing of certain things, it was not ordered in FY '24. And our COVID-19 federal funds with a budget of $4.2 million was fully expended at year end, and that fund has been closed and will no longer be reported going forward. So our debt service presentation, this is the city's planned debt schedule. This schedule does include the 2023 GEO bond anticipation notes paying off in FY 2028 without being refinanced, and that's significant for the city. That will be a challenge, but that's our plan at this time. You can see the different columns, the funded expenditures, what the actual debt service grows to from year to year, the excess or shortfall. And then in FY '25, we can use some capitalized interest to offset some of those interest payments, and then you can see the use of the committed reserve funds in FY '25 and FY '26, right now with additional monies being required in FY '26. And the interim borrowing that we did in FY '24 had a significant impact for this schedule. Previously, the debt grew to about $7.6 million and had coverage from reserves actually into FY '28. So this has changed somewhat, but it is our written debt service plan, and we have the intent of following the plan. So council, that ends the presentation of this information. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all the work that you've put into that, and also thank you for keeping us in line. You're always so on top of things, and we greatly appreciate the work that you do, and I think that we are very blessed to have you as our CFO.
Thank you very much, thank you. I would like to say I work with an amazing group of people, both within the finance department across the city, so thank you very much.
Yes, absolutely. All right, moving into item E, ordinances, first reading, the first reading of an ordinance to approve the city comprehensive plan. No one has signed up for public comments. We are going to look for a staff report from Mr. Dietrich.
Thank you. Madam Nave, Madam Mayor, members of council. So as you are aware, the city for about the last year and a half has been working on a complete rewrite of the city comprehensive plan. Just to go back into a little bit of background again, in the Commonwealth of Virginia, every locality is required to submit and approve a comprehensive plan dealing with land use, and there is also a required transportation element to that plan. The current comprehensive plan for the city was approved in 2017, and there was a future land use map update in 2019. So staff felt that in, at the end of that five-year period, when it was time to take a look at it, because of everything that has happened, what with, A, we have the pandemic behind us now, but we also have a casino that wasn't on the horizon, of course, in 2017. We had new intermediate school, we're going to have hopefully more development that's going to arise from these types of land uses. Staff brought it to the Planning Commission, who determined that we would do an update of the comprehensive plan. So we put out an RFP, we hired Quantum Consulting, who as you know has been working with the city to develop the city comprehensive plan. We've had, they've made site visits, we've had multiple public hearings, or public meetings with stakeholders and members of the public. We have also done survey after survey, as far as that goes, to get as much public input as we possibly can. And that kind of leads us to where we have been here recently. So the comprehensive plan was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission by resolution at its September 16th, 2024 meeting. Prior to that, we held a joint public hearing with the city council and the Planning Commission at the September 10th, 2024 meeting. A work session, of course, was held with the city council and city staff on Monday, September 26th, where we, staff took a few comments that the city council had. We have incorporated those comments into the text of the plan. There weren't any additional comments that came to my office by email. We also made a couple of updates to the future land use plan you have up here around the casino area. We expanded that casino land use designation, and then more in the center of the city were the old Virginia Intermont colleges. We expanded that area to kind of correspond with the housing authorities' future, or what is it, Choice Neighborhood Planning Grant, that's what it was. So those updates have been made. We've also made a few updates to make it look a little bit cleaner. The colors are a little better there than I think they were last time. You can tell the differences. The streets, we've darkened them up, so I think you can see it, it's a lot more readable. Those are the types of issues that are really important for the approval of the plan, but we want to make sure that anybody who takes a look at it can read it and see it and understand what it says. As I said, we are here at the end of this journey, thank goodness. You know, it's been a long time. We've put a lot of hard work into it, and staff recommends approval of the comprehensive plan on first ordinance reading, and of course, that can be by caption or not.
All right, thank you very much. We are looking for a council motion and second for the first reading of the ordinance, full or by caption.
I'll move for a first reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for by caption only. Any council discussion? I'll just start out and just say thank you to Jay and all the team at the city that's been working so hard on this. I feel like you've been so great about involving our community and the multiple meetings we've had to have discussions on it, and also keeping council well-involved and informed as the processes went along to develop the plan. So I just want to say thank you for all your hard work. Anyone else?
Well, you basically said it, but just again, thank you, Jay. Jay wears many hats here at City Hall, and I think a lot of us rely on him, so you probably do the work of a handful of people, so thank you.
Just to follow that train of thought, thank you, Jay, and thank you to your team, Planning Commission included, for all that you guys do. And then also thank you to the public that provided input, came to the meetings, helped this along its way, because, I mean, we have good ideas up here, but we're five out of 17,000 folks, so it's good to have all that input, so thank you for the work, and thank you for the input.
I'd also like to add, our Planning Commission who's here tonight, thank you all. I should have included you in that, but we know you're volunteers. You also are here because you love our city and care about it, so thank you for also being so involved in this. So next, we will, Tanil, please call the roll.
Barnum.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes. Reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance 24 hyphen 16, an ordinance of the city of Bristol approving the city of Bristol, Virginia comprehensive plan.
All right, thank you. Next is matters to be presented by members of the public for non-agenda items, and we have one person signed up, Mr. Eddie Powers. And I will ask you to come forward. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address, and you will get a yellow warning light, and then a red light means your time is up.
Eddie Powers, I reside at 915 Suncrest Drive. What I want to know is what is going to be done about the school traffic on Suncrest Drive of the evening. The fire department couldn't get out to my house, or the rescue squad, for about 45 minutes every day. If I need them and they can't get out, I'm going to sue the city. Now you listen to a Purgeon, that driveway was going to take care of it, which was a joke when he said it. Today, there was two school buses in all of that line, couldn't even get in. The fire department, there's no way they could have got out and through that unless they was going to Bottom Road. It's out of the way every day. If that's the way it's going to be, you need to stop running your buses and wasting the money, because all of them's bringing them with cars. It's pathetic. And all that school in one little area there, and you've got a terrible access to it. They know all that before you start. But he wanted to build a school, and you all went along. That's all I need.
All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
I move the approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second. Tanil, please call the roll.
Barnum.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes. All right, looking for a motion and a second for adjournment.
A move that we do now adjourn, second.
All right, Tanil, please call the roll.
Barnum.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.